We are not. Quick question. So, at 6:30? How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
He's good.
It is now 6:51, and I will call this meeting to order. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, the public is encouraged to wear face masks and social distancing measures have been put in place. Seating is limited. Reminder, please silence cell phones. City Clerk?
Will you uphold the counsel?
Present.
Mayor Protem and council members, this is a public hearing for the budget, July 1st, 2022, expiring on June 30th, 2023. We have presented and posted in the morning news as required by law, May 25th of the morning news. And it reads as follows: That last year, our revenues were budgeted at $7.566,989. This year's budget, the revenues will be at $9.42,516. That's a 19.5% increase. Against the expenditures of $7.566,989 of year 2021/2022 to the current 2022/2023 fiscal expenditures, the budget $9.42,516. Again, a 19.5% increase. The mileage rate going into the new year will be the same as it was last year. There is no increase in taxes, 204.8. That includes debt and operating. On the utility fund budget, the fiscal year, this current year we're in, ending in June 30th, 2022, we had revenues for water at $1.584,743. The current budget that we're proposing for 2022/2023, we're budgeting at $1.177,773,294. That's an 11.9% increase. We have the expenditures which match the revenues of $1.584,743 for the year 2021/2022 as to the year 2022/2023, $1.773,294. Again, an 11.9% increase. On the sewer budget, 2021/2022 revenues in sewer were $2.910,554. We're proposing for the budget of 2022/2023, a revenue of $3.74,011, a 5.6% increase. The expenditures match the revenues, 2021/2022 expenditures were at $2.910,554, as the budget for 2022/2023 is at $3.74,11, a 5.6% increase. Mayor Protem and council, that is the budget recap that we're presenting to you this evening and ran in the morning news on May 25th as required by law. Thank you. Do I have any questions? Discussions? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Properly moved in the second. All in favor by show of hands?
So, we have five minutes.
No, not down.
The green's on, but...
It is now six fifty-one, and I will call this meeting to order. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, the public is encouraged to wear face masks and social distancing measures have been put in place. Seating is limited. Reminder, please silence cell phones. City Clerk?
Will you uphold the council?
Councilmember Richard Clark?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember?
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Pauline Frosty?
Present.
Councilmember Amy Robinson?
Present.
Councilmember Lena Scott? Councilmember Lena Askin?
Present.
Councilmember Nicole Singletary? Finally, before we...
Public notice, budget approval for the City of Lake City. William?
Mayor Pro Tem and council members, this is a public hearing for the budget July 1st, 2022, expiring on June 30th, 2023. We have presented and posted in the morning news as required by law, May 25th of the morning news. And it reads as follows, that last year, our revenues were budgeted at seven million five sixty-six nine eighty-nine. This year's budget, the revenues will be at nine million forty-two five hundred sixteen. That's a nineteen point five percent increase. Against the expenditures of seven million five sixty-six nine eighty-nine of year 2021, 2022, to the current 2022, 2023 fiscal expenditures, the budget nine million forty-two five one six. Again, a nineteen point five percent increase. The mileage rate going into the new year will be the same as it was last year. There is no increase in taxes, two oh four point eight. That includes debt and operating. On the utility fund budget, the fiscal year la- this current year we're in, ending in June 30th, 2022, we had revenues for water at one million five eighty-four seven forty-three. The current budget that we're proposing for 2022, 2023, we're budgeting at one point one million seven seventy-three two ninety-four. That's an eleven point nine percent increase. We have the expenditures which match the revenues of one million five eighty-four seven forty-three for the year 2021, 2022, as to the year 2022, 2023, one million seven seventy-three two ninety-four. Again, eleven point nine percent increase. On the sewer budget, 2021, 2022, revenues in sewer were two million nine ten five fifty-four. We're proposing for the budget of 2022, 2023, a revenue of three million seventy-four thousand and eleven dollars, a five point six percent increase. The expenditures match the revenues, 2021, 2022 expenditures were at two million nine ten five fifty-four, as the budget for 2022, 2023 is at three million seventy-four eleven, a five point six percent increase. Mayor Pro Tem and council, that is the budget recap that we're presenting to you this evening and ran in the morning news on May 25th as required by law. Thank you.
Do I have any questions, discussions? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Properly moved in second. All in favor by show of hands?
So, we have five minutes.
Look. The green's on, but... Hey, old man. Oh, blue-haired man, how are you? Huh? Boo. Oh. Those two of us. I tell you, when I get up, the back won't let me handle it anymore. And I ain't making no apologies.
Oh, man.
Hey, how are you? Whoever you is. Girl, you been studying that thing. You spend the whole weekend doing it. Better you than me. Now, who's due the invocation?
It is now seven PM, and I will call this meeting to order. I am Nicole Singletary, the Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Lake City, and I will be conducting this meeting tonight. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the public is encouraged to wear face masks and social distancing measures have been put in place. Seating is limited. Reminder, before the meeting begins, we ask that you silence your cell phones. We're gonna have the invocation by Councilmember Robinson, and we're gonna have the pledge by Councilmember Askin. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you with thanks and praise on this evening. We thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to conduct another city council meeting. Father God, we ask you to keep Mayor Anderson as he is under the weather and First Lady Anderson as she cares for him. Continue to care for all the sick. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 I am allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, calling the city council members.
Present.
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 Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda with Resolution 2022.036 for final reading table and Resolution 2022.039 for final reading table.
Move to adopt.
Properly moved in second. Any questions?
Yes. Do we have to mention the Resolution 2022.043? Removed.
Yes, you might go ahead and add that one to it also.
Okay. Uh, Resolution 2022.043 for final reading, that is removed from the agenda. I need a motion.
Move, uh, move, uh, to adopt. Approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any more questions? All in favor by show of hands? Approver minutes. Approver minutes from Monday, May 9th, 2022, budget workshop meeting. Approver for minutes from Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, regular city council meetings. Approver minutes from teleconference on Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, special meeting appointment of city clerk. Approver minutes from teleconference Tuesday, May 28th, 2022, special city council meeting for changing of meeting date. I need a motion to approve the minutes as follow.
Move to approve. That was on May 24th. Twenty-eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry. May 24th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor by show of hands? Presentation.
All right, mayor and council, we're going to do a presentation on the Coal Road property, which we have the sign back here. Brian Brown was supposed to be doing this presentation, but he had a death and he was not able to make the trip. But you wanted an update? This is a estimate on construction cost for the 278 Coal Road property. We are, or he and GMK were in planning to break ground the middle of July. They're in the process of receiving a fourth round of bids on the property. This is the worst-case scenario, so I've been told to construct that property and also renovate the current building. We, we'll probably have a discussion more in depth with this later on in the meeting when we go into executive session. But this is what he was going to present to you. They do plan to break ground in July. We also have the other project at the wastewater treatment plant, which is paid for also with the one percent funds and the balance of funds left from the upgrade to expand the lab at the wastewater treatment plant. GMK has that project as well. And they also plan to break ground out there in July to expand that property. We have checked with everyone, it won't be a problem with two construction sites going on at the same time. But that property, that building will begin to show a different look next year as they start the process of expanding it. That pro- that project is completely funded, and there's no problems with it. So that's what he was going to share with you tonight in regards to the Coal Road, and we'll speak more later on in the meeting on specifics of this project. So, you asked to be updated, I hope that gives you some idea where we're at at this moment. All the plans have been submitted. The final plans are going for the review as we speak through the city and our people that handle that for us, it's under contract with us, and they're waiting to get the last report back. From my, my asking the question where we stand, they don't see a problem with it at all, and they're moving forward to give them the go-ahead on the plans that were submitted. So that's what I have to present to you on those projects that GMK is overseeing for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment period. Notes on comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administrator and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to council. Legits later. William?
Okay. Thank you, madam Mayor Pro Tem. Let, mayor, mayor Pro Tem and council members, I present to you for consideration ordinance number 2022.007, second and final reading, an ordinance for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, to approve levying taxes and establishing a municipal budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023, and all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2022.007, second and final reading.
Move to approve.
Properly moved in second. Any questions or discussions? All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and council have before your consideration an ordinance for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, to further provide procedures for meeting and other matters related thereto. This is in regards that it was requested that we clarified the attendance, so Charlie I-Poc, uh, bid it through municipal association and the state's attorney to come up with this ordinance, 2022.008. I will turn it over to Charlie if you have any questions pertaining to this ordinance.
If we can speak on it, if we can discuss it further in executive session, too. This really is a, an effort that we have done in other municipalities as well to sort of normalize the, uh, the, how quorums are defined in meetings where we've had fully in-person meetings, fully electronic meetings, quasi, uh, in-person and electronic meetings, and sort of throughout the state, there's been some question of how do we count votes for quorums? How do we do voting? What about executive sessions? Sort of how all those things flow together now, post-COVID. Not that we're totally post-COVID, certainly, but we're sort of getting there. And so I've had numerous discussions with Eric Shidwell, who's the director for municipal association, as well as consulted various attorney general meetings relating to the matter, and have crafted this. So, at a real high level, that's how this breaks out, sort of normalizing what those procedures are, how those count, how for how that there's no conflict relative to that. I can go into more in the executive session, but that is a real high level of the sort of genesis behind this and what is the context.
Do we need to go in executive session before we actually vote on this?
You can. I don't think you need to, but if you have questions beyond that, certainly, you know, more than you need to do. And this is just first reading?
Right. That's what I was just saying. Okay.
So, we can go into executive session about that next month, if you like, whatever.
Next month. Next month.
I need a motion to approve ordinance 2022.008 for first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions or discussions? All in favor by show of hands? Next item. Resolution.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members, for your consideration, Resolution number 2022.33, a resolution of the update rental, a resolution to update the rental policy along with hours of operation and fees and police, and police associated with security for the Village Green and all matters related thereto. What brought this about was they wanted to use the Village Green around one, two o'clock in the morning, but we have a ten o'clock ordinance for noise, so we wanted to memorialize that the Village Green is available from eight to 10 PM. We also wanted to memorialize that the security is not free. There's a thirty-five dollar an hour fee for police officers, of which thirty dollars is for the police officer per hour, five dollars is for the City of Lake City to facilitate and recording all the transactions to get the officer paid.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 2022.033 for final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions?
Yes, let me ask you, what was the, um, previous fee for Village Green?
I'm sorry?
What was the previous fee for Village Green?
Um, the Village Green rents for how much? Five hundred.
Okay, but for the police officers?
Police officers, it used to be just thirty. We didn't get anything for the city to have to record all the transactions and file the taxes and so forth.
Okay.
Any more questions?
All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members, for your consideration, Resolution 2022.034, final reading, a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, authorizing the acceptance of twenty thousand dollar Duke Energy Grant for the purpose of purchasing Manola, Matro- Motorola APX 6000 Series radios and accessories for, and all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve Resolution. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Get out.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 2022.034 for final reading.
For Motorola radios.
For Motorola radios.
That word is so old.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions? All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Let's see if I can cheer this one up. Uh, ma- madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members, for your consideration, Resolution 2022.035, final reading, a resolution for the City of Lake City, South Carolina, authorizing the acceptance of grant funds, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars from the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority for the church, street, tank rehabilitation and repairs and all matters related thereto.
Move to approve. Final reading.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 2022.035 for final reading.
Move to approve Resolution 2022.035, final reading.
Properly moved in second. Any, any questions? Go ahead.
Where would we start?
I think within the next sixty days is what we're hoping for, but you also have to bid all this out in thirty days, and hopefully we can turn it around. I would say before the year end. Be truthful amount, with the way things are going in these days and the marketplace. But this actually puts the funding... But this actually puts the funding in place so we can then move forward. When we get the kickoff meeting scheduled, we will know more about when we can get started.
Do you know when that'll be?
Once we approve, I've already signed, once we approve this, I will sign the documents and send them off. And then they'll turn around and get back with me and set up a kickoff meeting. Usually that's within 30, 40 days, usually.
All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Council, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members, resolution 2022.037, final reading. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina seeking the approval to rescind previous check signer cards with First Citizens Bank and update with the current signature other and all matters related thereof. We're proposing that the new signature card will consist of Mayor Anderson, William A. Hall, Joseph Cooper, Marsha Thrillinger, Tanya Huel, and Randy Driggers.
How many signatures do you have to have?
Two.
Two, any of the two?
Any two. And I will say like the other day, we only have one available. So that's why I added another name just to cover us on the backside.
Okay, now I noticed you have the Fire Chief's name. How does that, excuse me, I thought I had it turned off. I'm trying to understand why he would be unauthorized a signature.
Because he is one of the directors and he also sits on the Monday Morning Executive Committee team.
I need a motion to approve resolution 2022.037 for final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. You guys already answered your questions? So all in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members, for your consideration, resolution number 2022.038, final reading. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina seeking the approval to change the scheduled date into date of Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, regular council meeting to the business day before, Monday, November 7th, 2022, and all matters related thereto. Tuesday, November 8th is election day. And Councilmember Robinson brought that to our attention. We missed that one as well.
I need a motion to approve resolution 2022.038 for final reading.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2022.038 for final reading.
Properly moved in second. Any questions?
Do we have to do this every time we mess up by doing that or can we?
Well, that's a regular scheduled meeting, so we have to officially change it with y'all's consent and vote.
But when we send out meeting dates the first of the year, we cannot straighten that out then?
Well, actually that is the regular meeting date. And when it got brought to our attention, we are correcting it now. So it actually fell as a normal meeting date, which normally it's not. We haven't had that problem before. It just so happens this year, the first Tuesday after the first Monday for election day falls on our date. Because I think Tuesday is the first day of the month.
All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members, for your consideration, resolution 2022.040, final reading. A resolution of the city of Lake City seeking to dissolve resolution 2021.379, appointing seven employees and their alternates to the grievance committee and establishing a new resolution with new members with expiring terms in accordance with the employee handbook grievance policy and all matters related thereto. We've had staff to leave, the members were short, and then they weren't staggered to be on the terms that they needed to be. So they have the new members and everybody's been assigned a term to expire. So we rotate them every two years, two years, three years? Three years.
So they weren't on that schedule before, is that what you're saying? They weren't on that rotation before?
No, ma'am, it was not set up like that originally.
So everybody was on the same?
Same. But now we've lost staff, we had to replace it, so we're going to do it correctly this time.
Okay.
I need a motion to approve resolution 2022.040 for final reading.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any other questions? All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members, for your consideration, resolution 2022.041, final reading. A resolution establishing approval for the acceptance of the recommendation from the big committee to award AECOM Technical Services Incorporated in general engineering services for an additional seven years and all matters related thereto.
Can I make a motion to table for further discussion?
Second. Properly moved in second. Any other questions?
To table.
It's table.
You need to vote, it's the table.
Sorry.
So I need a motion to table resolution 2022.041 for final reading. Properly moved in second. All in favor by show of hands? Next item.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members, for your consideration, resolution 2022.042, final reading. A resolution establishing approval for the acceptance of the recommendation from the big committee to award Watford Fencing the contract for the work to be modified, the existing ball field fencing structure and all matters related thereto. This resolution is awarding a bid and expenditure of funds that the Florence County Jason Springs Councilmember Jason Springs has earmarked for the city of Lake City to pay for their services.
I need a motion to approve resolution 2022.042 for final reading.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2022.042 for final reading.
Properly moved in second.
$36,000.
Was that the lowest bid?
That's what the county's given us to have it done.
Okay, were there other bids?
There were, hold on. Florence County, let's see here. Yes, there were three other bids.
Okay, the amounts.
I'm sorry?
Names and amounts.
Okay. I'm looking for the name on these.
Land Industry.
Summit Engineering. Hold on for a second, I got the wrong number that makes sense, it was 42, right here. Well, I take that back. The only bid received was Watford Fencing, $36,800.
Did you send out requests for other bids?
There's a bid pack, yes, ma'am.
Okay, you don't know who the other?
It was also posted on the website, state bid site, and any place that we normally post our bids.
Okay, so I can go there now if I want to check it?
I'm sure you can, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it's also posted on the city's website.
Okay.
Any more questions?
All in favor by show of hands?
I abstain. I abstain.
City Administrator reports.
We have one more resolution, our resolution 2022.044. We're going to remove 43, and then we have resolution 2022.044 for final reading. Is that not on your sheet?
Yes.
All right. I will read, the city of Lake City would like to appoint the following to the Architectural Review Board, ARB, for two-year term. Reginald Nesbit, expiration date is 6/13/2024. Carl Turlowinger, expired date 6/13/2044, and all matters related thereto.
I do apologize, I was looking at my other agenda without this resolution on there. So I need a motion for resolution 2022.044 for final reading.
Motion to approve resolution?
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions? All in favor by show of hands?
All right, now City Administrator.
Now City Administrator reports.
Madam Council, before we get into the monthly financials, I have, Ms. Donna, you want to pull it up for me, please? What you're seeing on the screen now is a commercial that will be airing on WBTW, channel 13.
It's time for new beginnings in Lake City. The city of Lake City is excited to offer new housing incentives for first responders, new internship opportunities for local students, new events such as the food truck rodeo, Juneteenth festival, and concerts on the Village Green, and youth programs including an esports league, scout troops, and an explorers post. Come live, work, play, and visit Lake City SC.
It's a 30-second spot that we'll be running on WBT to promote the city of Lake City. It seems like some of the advertisements and the news reports that we are in the paper, we get a lot more calls to inquire about vacant properties and other things that they can do here, which we'll talk about as things progress. But this is something that the Public Information Office put together, and I think it's very well done. So I wanted to share it with you before anybody else got to see it.
It was short and sweet. It was short and sweet.
Yes, 30 seconds. Okay, and for the monthly reports, the financial reports that we have ending in for May. Revenues for the general fund are coming in at $7,92523. That's 94% of the budget. The expenditures are at $7,638,349. That's 101% of the budget. And if you'll note the notation here, this number is including the capital expenditures that was not actually part of the budget line. So when we get down to the end of the year and our revenues come in, it will, I counteract everything because we still have a good bit of revenues that we will report into the July and August period that will be put back in June. In the water side, we had revenues of $1,556,496. That's 98% of the budget. And in the expense side, we have expenditures of $1,366,626, 86% of the budget. So we are surplus of $189,870. On the sewer side, we have revenues coming in at $2,832,618, 97% of the budget. Expenditures at $2,836,770, 94% of the budget. We have overspent $4,152. And that's because we are doing, had to do a lot of repairs to two of our major wells. That's the financials I have for you. Yes, go ahead, please.
When you're explaining the top with the expenditures up top with the 101%, do you, do you, do you project that that number will go up before it comes back down?
Well, basically it will go, that number should go up more because we have June's numbers to go in. But then the revenues should be there when we post back to counteract that. All right, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council member, for your approval, present to you the bill list, number one through eight. And I will bring to your attention the Republic Bill and the Lee County Bill. The Lee County Bill is what we literally take in our sludge. So it's running about $5,000, $6,000 a month as opposed to the $30,000 and $35,000.
I need a motion for approval of bill list for June 2022, items one through eight.
Make a motion to approve the bills, items one through eight.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions? All in favor by show of hands?
Madam Council, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and Council, I'll turn it over to Chief Cooper for a public safety report.
30 seconds. 30 seconds.
Good evening to have Mayor Pro Tem and Council.
Good evening.
Brief overview here of the May 2022.
Thank you.
As of May 2022, for the city of Lake City Police Department, you notice that the total call for service is documented 801 a month. Traffic stopper at 127. Burglary alarms, 57. Domestic calls, 48. We conducted 48 property checks, investigated 41 traffic accidents. We dealt with 19 individuals that were disordered. 13 warrants were served. With those warrants being served, we had 17 that resulted in assault, larceny, which is on the petty larceny, a smaller version of grand larceny. Shootings, now on this report of shootings, that's seven. It doesn't factor in that this, the title of shooting does not mean that someone was shot. We had seven incidents of someone was shot. We're talking about discharging the firearm, it would be in the city limits or in the county. So every time that call out, we respond anyway.
Somebody hears what they called.
Say again?
Somebody hears a shot and they call.
They call 911. And the closest unit, whether it be county or city, we go out and respond to it. So that doesn't mean seven people were shot, it just means they had calls of shooting, discharging the firearm. Also 12 calls of forgery.
What is that? Explain that to me.
What's that?
Forgery, I know what forgery is, but why would you have 12 calls?
Well, we have 12 related calls, usually when an individual's out of money. So those calls used to come from the bank, or either Walmart in particular. In this case, I think it's more so Walmart when the individual comes out and their ID's been compromised and they forward checks and they pass checks. And when they do them at the stores, or whether it be Walmart or any convenience store, they give us a call because either they've forged their names or presented an ID that's not really authentic. Usually it's identity theft, but this system does not have a way to correlate that or identify that. So it's forgery. Out of the 90 calls for traffic, 24 were vehicle license violation, four dealt with simple possession of marijuana. Eight of those 20, eight of the, out of the 90, 24 at the highest, eight of them were driving under suspension. Now we investigated total accidents for reports, or incidents for report count was a larger than 49. They were all, they were pretty much documented as far as reports that were generated. Out of those reports, 17 of them resulted in arrest. Also in the month of May, possibly a week ago, or two weeks now, we put out a press conference, we did a press conference with Public Information Division for Mr. Caleb Toby McFadden, who was wanted for the charge of murder on Mr. Tariq Hannah from Graham Rowan, to which we elicited help with US Marshal Service. And Mr. McFadden did turn himself in to the Lake City Police Department, and he was arrested and charged with murder and possession of weapon and commission of violent crime. So we're still working with that case. It is ongoing, even though arrest was generated, it's still ongoing. As far as the youth intervention side, Police Department? Girl Scout Troop 2722 will be meeting June 15th, 5 to 6, or at least 5 until. It's going to be the initial meeting. It's going to be the initial meeting for the Girl Scout Troops. If you're right at the Lake City Police Department, it's normally going to be into this arena right here of the judicial. So they'll be meeting here for the initial meeting, and they're going to go over things like what to expect from Girl Scouts, the laws, the promise of their Girl Scout mission, and pretty much the do's and the don'ts, and they're going to talk about do's. And then, at this time, right now, we have 10 young ladies that range from K, actually middle school down to high school. They're going to be joining us. So during this time with 10, hopefully everybody will be on board with being a member. If not, we do have a outlet, so to speak. Reverend Hooker has approached me on several occasions, and his church and his parish is going to assist us with those who cannot pretty much meet that threshold. But we're going to work with everyone within the group before we even go to that level. Right now, it looks like everybody's going to be on board, so they'd agree to help us out. We really do appreciate that. Also, on June 22, the parents and the volunteers will be invited to another Girl Scout meeting, to which we have a lot of volunteers that want to help out the Girl Scouts, and we're happy for that. We really are. There are some who can't because of reasons that we do a background check in order for you to participate and assist with any program that's, I guess, that's overseen by Girl Scout, Boy Scouts. So there are a lot of them wanting to help, but we're trying to find a way that they can help somewhat indirectly as opposed to directly that would violate the constitutional bylaws of the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts. So they're going to be at 5:00 on the 22nd. Like I said, those are going to be the parents and the volunteers because it's so easy to drop a child off and have them participate in programs, but we want the kids, we want the family members, we want the parents and the volunteers to understand the process of what we do there. It's not going to be a babysitting type event for you to participate. So it'll be all hands on deck. The Boy Scout Troop, we're moving now to try to find an initial meeting for that. I am one of the troop leaders for the Boy Scout Troop on 500. And also, I've had some individuals reach out to me from the local churches who's going to assist me with that because we need at least three. So we're going to move forward there as we process the background information and get them ran through the criminal aspect of it to make sure that everyone is on the bug board and up and up, and they are. And I'm only saying that because these individuals have actually been leaders of the Boy Scout Troop committee many years. Some I've known when I was coming through the ranks that they want to participate.
We already have the young boys sign up for that one?
We have a list that we'll generate from the middle school of Ron McNair and also Jake Paul. And it looks promising right now. It really is. Everybody says they want to do it. Of course, summertime is here. We'll see after summer whether they still want to participate. Because we know kids, they're kind of moved. They'll say yes now, then next week, you can't get an answer. But as of right now, we'll just see. We have the initial meeting, what we're going to do. Also, the Police Explorer 503, we're going to have the initial meeting July 13, to which that's going to be sponsored by also the police department. But that program is a little bit different. It's not so much on the level of Boy Scout, Girl Scout. These are individuals who want, or at least aspire to be, police officers in the realm of law enforcement in that capacity. So they'll come in, and they'll do physical fitness, marching. They'll learn first aid. They pretty much go through an overview of what law enforcement do at the basic. From the jail aspect of it, handcuffing, to actually doing a ride-along with a police officer. They actually go to other states and participate with other, well, compete against other sheriffs and police departments. So we're trying to get that program back. The City of Lake City, we've had this program many, many years ago. We found the photographs, certificates, trophies. We did really well with it. Like I said, we had a lot of individuals who were part of the Explorer program. We went on to be hired patrolmen. One guy that we know from here, he went on for a moment in time. He worked for the Secret Service. They do have promising careers. So we look forward to that happening. So like I said, the initial meeting for that is July 13. And as of now, that's going to be it for May 22. May 2022, Reverend, for the police department. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
It's the M-word today.
I ain't going to say nothing. Somebody said your 30 seconds was up.
It was like 10 minutes ago.
Madam Mayor, Pro-Tim, that is our administrative report for you today. And it's your version to go into executive session.
Thank you. Executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-40-70, for the discussion of personnel employment, compensation, or appointments, and the receipt of legal advice relating to pending, threatening, or potential claims and matters covered by the attorney-client, privileged as well as the settlement of legal claims and other matters related thereto. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All in favor by show of hands?
Oh, my God, my eyes burning.
About being in this position as councilwoman. We did a mayor's breakfast as well with them. So Lake City was represented well. That's my reports. Thank you. All righty, so before I start my reports, Councilmember Crosby did have to leave during executive session, but she wanted to mention about the retention pond at CVS on Thomas Street. She says it needs serious attention. The trees have grown. It's a eyesore, and she wants to know who is responsible for it. That was her report.
CVS?
CVS, yeah, the retention pond at CVS on Thomas Street. And on to my reports. I just wanted to thank you all for coming out. Also, thank you for being patient with me as I conduct my first meeting. Piggyback off Councilmember Robinson. Go vote tomorrow. Tomorrow is Election Day. Congratulations to our new deputy administrator, Chief Cooper, and also welcome aboard our new city clerk, Ms. Marcia. And we did have Rashad Day. I thought you was going to mention it.
Yes, I was just going to ask you, could I? Could I?
Yeah, so we did have Rashad Day on Saturday. I was not there. Ms. Robinson was there, so she could speak a little bit on that. But I did see pictures. It looks like a great turnout. I'm pretty sure Rashad would be very pleased. Also, the Juneteenth event starts on Thursday. We got a meet and greet at the Bean Market. And then we got the gala on that Friday at the Continuum, starts at 7:00. And the barbecue cook-off and other activities on that Saturday as well at the Continuum. So hope to see you guys there. Before I adjourn.
Yes, I just wanted to add, sorry, it was listed here. Thank everyone for coming out and participating for Rashad Graham Day. And mostly important, working together for making Rashad Graham Day a city day. But thank you.
All righty. Heck, that one I'm talking about, Councilmember. Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor, show of hands. Good night.
Yeah, y'all got to be tired.
The gala is at?